Okay. Oops. Okay, we're going to call to order Monday, October 18th, 2021, City of Vandia, City Council meeting. We'll begin this meeting with a moment of reflection. Okay, thank you. We all stand for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no minutes to approve, so we'll go to communications, petitions, and awards. Mr. Went, you have a couple?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I would like to introduce two new employees that we have on today. The first is our public safety specialist who entered his probationary period. That's Mr. Eddie Olinger, Jr., and would like to bring Chief Alt House up to talk to you a little bit about him.
All right. Go and step up here. Good evening, everyone. We are honored and privileged to have our latest employee, our public safety specialist, Eddie Olinger, Jr., who started with us last Wednesday. And he is beginning his, he began his initial orientation and has been assigned to his field training officers. Just to give you a little background on Eddie, he graduated from Northmont High School in 2011, and he is currently, or he did work as a public safety dispatcher at the University of Dayton for two years prior to coming to the City of Vandia here. He also worked in customer service for EZ Cleaners since 2012 as well. And he resides in Union with his fiancee Erin, who's with us tonight, and they're planning to get married in January of this year. So a lot of exciting things going on in Eddie's life right now. So please welcome me, or please join me in congratulating Eddie, and I'm going to have him introduce his guest here tonight. He's got some family members, so we welcome him to the police department. As you know, working in the communications center is a very busy multitasking position, ready at any moment to lend help to anyone who may call 911 or an non-emergency, they may have a question about something. So Eddie really came through well throughout the interview process and the hiring process. In fact, just a personal side note, the University of Dayton police chief is a personal friend of mine, and we actually had conversations. He regrets losing Eddie, but he also gives him a very high recommendation, so we're excited to have him aboard with us at the police department. So at this time, I'll let you introduce your family.
Hello.
Hi.
First, my fiancee Erin.
Hi.
He's got the order down.
Good job. You're going to be a great husband.
To the left of her, her mom and dad, her mom Sheila, her father Brett. To the right of her, my brother Alex, my mother Tracy, and then my father Eddie also.
All right. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Welcome. Welcome to Vandia.
Good luck, Mr. Long. Go through the interview. We're excited for him as a presence through his field training program, but as part of our family, if they get this part.
All right, Your Honor. The next person that we have up is our new finance clerk. Her name is Erin Crisp. And Erin, do you mind standing up? Erin has come here today with her fiancee Phil, and they actu, not fiancee, husband Phil, they just got married. In between, in between when we offered the job and when she started, they got married. And so congratulations to you two, and it's my understanding that things are going very well. Erin was a clerk.
Was her married or was the job?
That's really ambiguous, but thank you. That's so embarrassing there. I meant with the finance department, I don't know anything about, you know, that. She was a clerk at the municipal court in Urbana and had seven years there. And one of the things that stood out about Mrs. Crisp when she came to the interview, she said, "I show up to work every day at 7:00 a.m. I get the docket ready for court, and I don't even get paid until 8:00 o'clock." And I thought, man, those are qualities that we should look for in every employee. But thank you very much, Mrs. Crisp and Mr. Crisp for coming out here today. So congratulations to you and welcome.
Great.
And typically, at this point, we would say that the families, we're going to do a whole bunch of boring local government stuff. And so if you want to stay, you're welcome to, and it's an open meeting. But if you get up and go, we won't be offended.
Don't blame you. Don't blame you.
I'm offended a little.
Can't you speak for yourself?
Mrs. Barnes also started, but was unable to attend, so we'll just push that back, and we'll introduce you to her in the finance department at another time.
Okay. We'll go on to the next item, a public hearing. We have none of that, so we'll go on to comments from interested citizens. Okay, please note, per the advice of the city attorney, anyone wishing to comment needs to personally be at the meeting, so we will not be able to take comments from those participating electronically through Zoom. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak? Okay, then we'll move on. We'll go to the city major's report.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The, we will hold a budget workshop on November 1st in the community room at the Justice Center at 4:00 p.m. That will be in place of council study session. The regular meeting will begin at 7:00 p.m. right here in council chambers.
That's it, sir.
Okay. I will comment. This will be the second budget workshop. They're long, they're tedious, but it's necessary. We look at a lot of items and almost every expense in setting up the 2022 budget, so they're good sessions. Okay, we'll move on. We have no old business, so that brings us to our first resolution. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Montgomery County Budget Commission has approved the city's property tax rate of 4.14 mils for 2022. The city's inside millage of 1.84 mils is composed of 1.54 mils for the general fund with an estimated revenue of $576,807 and 0.3 mils for the police pension fund with an estimated revenue of $112,365. Inside millage refers to the 10-mil property tax limitation that can be established without voter approval. Various taxing units may seek to levy taxes on the same property, but the total amount of unvoted taxes actually levied may not exceed 10 mils. The city's outside voted millage is 2.3 mils for the general fund with an estimated revenue of $861,465.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 21-R-65.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Forrest. Is there any discussion? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes. And the motion passes six to zero. Next resolution?
A resolution establishing a summer meeting schedule for the months of June, July, and August 2022, I think it's supposed to say.
Mr. Went?
It says 2021, but I think it's supposed to say 2022.
Good.
It absolutely is. The, Your Honor, this resolution proposes that during the months of June, July, and August 2022, council, city council would meet once per month on the third Monday of each month. Council's workshop would begin at 6:00 p.m. tentatively. With the council meeting at 7:00 p.m., the official dates for the 2022 would be June 20th, July 18th, and August 15th. We've agreed that council will hold summer meetings, additional summer meetings on an as-needed basis in order to provide good customer service, especially with regard to Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission. In order to, in order to pass this resolution, I would suggest a motion to amend the legislation to read 2022.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend Resolution 21-R-66 to reflect the months of June, July, and August of 2022.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Falek and a second by Councilman Blakesley. Is there any discussion? Roll, please.
This is to amend. Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes. And the motion passes six to zero.
We need to make a motion to approve it now.
Say what?
We need to make a motion to approve it now.
Yes, we just, that was just to amend.
Oh, that was to amend, okay.
So I'll make that motion to approve it. Resolution 20-R-66 is amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Falek and a second by Councilman Blakesley. Do we have to take a roll?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes. Okay. So we move on to the next resolution.
A resolution authorizing the submittal of applications for federal FAST Act funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission.
Mr. Went?
Your Honor, MVRPC will be accepting fixing America's Surface Transportation FAST Act applications for consideration for surface tran, the Surface Transportation Program and the funding associated with that. This year, they'll accept, accept applications for simple resurfacing projects to be funded in fiscal years '23 and '24. We're recommending council's approval to submit an application for funding as required in order to, in order to resurface Webster Street from Little York to Stop Eight Road. The simple resurfacing projects are eligible for 80% federal funding, up to $750,000. The total estimated cost for the project is $979,414, and the city's portion is estimated at $179,282.80.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 21-R-67 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Forrest. Is there any comments or discussion? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes. And the resolution is passed six to zero. We have no ordinances in its first reading, none in the second reading, so we have an emergency ordinance. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the finance director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Your Honor, this emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts related to stormwater fees, trash collection, weed cutting, and/or sewer and water.
Okay, since this is an emergency ordinance, it requires a public hearing? We have any? Okay, with that, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance 21-29 as an emergency.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Forrest and a second by Councilman Falek. Is there any discussion or comments? Roll, please.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes. And the emergency ordinance passes six to zero. Reports from boards and commission, we have a variance on a rear deck 2078 Settlers Trail. Mr. McDonald?
Oh, that's me.
Oh, I think I just go, I'm sorry about that. It's only been eight months, I'm getting used to it. This variance, rear deck 2078 Settlers Trail, the applicant, Mr. Jeffrey Johnson, has requested a variance to the 10-foot required rear setback established by the Falls Condo Section 1 plat to permit a deck and steps within approximately four feet of the rear property line. This variance would allow the applicant to expand his deck approximately two feet, and the new steps, four feet, eight and one quarters inches into the setback. The property directly behind the condo unit is conservation land, thus there are no residents directly behind this unit that would be impacted, and an identical application in the area was approved by council previously.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the variance for the rear deck 2078 Settlers Trail.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Forrest and a second by Councilman Lewis. Is there any discussion or comments? Roll, please.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes. So the variance is approved on a vote of six to zero. Next variance we have is Neely dental sign on 39 Delcey Drive.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant Van Horn Design and Build LLC has requested a variance to allow a projecting sign on the rear-facing facade of 39 Delcey Drive. The applicant has also requested a variance to allow for an increase in allowable sign area per City Code Section 1236.11-E7-C. Projecting or hanging signs, a projecting or hanging sign is allowable only on each street frontage with a maximum of six square feet of sign area. The proposed 11.75 square foot sign would be located on the rear facade of the building where the main entrance and parking lot is. The applicant indicated in their letter of justification that the size increase is needed due to the distance from the driveway entrance to the front door, and at council's request, I have gathered a rendering of what it would look like on the building, and that is projected on the screen for you.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the variance at 39 Delcey Drive for the projecting sign in the square footage as recommended by BZA.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Falek and a second by Councilman Blakesley. Is there any discussion or comments? Well, that will go to the vote.
And just for the record, I just want to make sure that, I'm sure it is, but this is a request for two variances. We're voting to grant both variances in the one motion, one for a sign in the rear and the other one for the sign size. Just want to make sure that's how you read it, but I want to make sure everyone else understood we're actually granting two variances with this request. Thank you.
We're on it, Jerry. We got it.
Okay, well, I got to earn my dollars somehow.
It's paid by the word.
Yes, there you go. Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes, and the variance is approved on a vote of six to zero. We'll go to the September bill listing in the amount of $1,162,251.85, and the September purchase card detail in the amount of $28,363.04. So that brings us to council comments. Mr. McDonald?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Went?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Super. Councilman Falek?
Just a couple of things. First, to make a motion to excuse Mayor Herbst from both meetings this evening.
Okay. Take that off my list.
We have to vote on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great.
And just a couple of things. One, two things on economic development, just to commend staff. First, the creative form, creative foam relocation to the city, bringing 110 new jobs and an existing payroll of $5.7 million with a growth of another $4 million, so it's a substantial increase to our business community, so congratulations to staff for that. And then also, Heraeus, I think several of us were at the ribbon-cutting back on October 7th, another company that has invested $25 million with their expansion and 25 new jobs. And I think the, and I think Mr. Went actually mentioned it previously, but it was really exciting when we were there is to hear how complimentary they were of city staff from the development and engineering services staff to economic development staff to fire department. So it's great when we hear that the new business and their growth in Vandia, and they attribute that to the cooperation and the work that our staff puts into that. So thanks, everybody, for that. And the last thing I have is just to congratulate Mickey Marlowe for her 23 years of service to the city and specifically to Parks and Recreation. That's another one of our longtime, part-time employees who I think really are the backbone to Parks and Recreation, and she's had involvement from when I was a child all the way up to now, and she's finally stepping down and retiring. So thank you, Mrs. Marlowe, for your commitment to the city. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Forrest?
Well, you mentioned creative foam, and they have been, they're someone that I see often, and they have been very complimentary about dealing with staff, and they're very excited about coming into Vandia, so thank you. I also want to commend staff for our previous budget workshop. Though it is long, it is extremely interesting, and I think Mr. Went has made it more creative and exciting, so I'm glad for that. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Blakesley?
Well, I echo what others have said already, and include our congratulations and to all staff in providing us a rich environment for the goal-setting and very, I think here again, I've said this over and over again, this is where we really have the opportunity to shape and project the future of the city in these goal-setting meetings and retreats. And that's where I really enjoy being able to forecast and see and be involved with the growth and be part of the team and see the team be part of us, see that vision. And that was very obvious and evident in our goal-setting meeting, as well as with the finance workshop. So that was, appreciate all the hard work on that. One additional thing, then, congratulations to public safety specialists, Deborah Wright and Haley Rue, and I believe Adrienne Ballridge, for their award for the tenacity and dedication, as you pointed out, to, during the tornado of, Memorial Day tornado of 2019. Just goes to show, again, dedicated employees, as well as Mickey Marlowe, she's a dedicated employee. All, you know, the city's just rich with dedicated employees, really helping the city be a team, be part of the team player. But, you know, that's a stressful time during that tornado, and having been a dispatcher myself at one point in time, you take two calls at one time, and that's stressful. I can only imagine what it was like in that dispatch, and I know others came in off the street to help, but certainly hats off to all those public service safety specialists that work in those conditions, in any, any daily condition. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Woods?
Yes, just to reiterate the commendation to the city manager and staff for planning meeting and the painless budget meeting. It was just really a treat to have that. And as I took the cap off my tee this evening, this kind of just depicts the energy of the, this new year, and it says, "You see things and say why, but I dream things that never were and say why not." And that says a lot about what this staff is, is doing this year for us, and I think the whole comprehensive plan and our ideas about what this city can be, and just, I really appreciate the fact that they're looking in different directions.
Thank you. Councilman Lewis?
I don't wish to be redundant, but I do want to, to thank Mr. Went and the staff for the budget meeting. I thought it went very well. It was, it went fast for the three or four hours that we were there, and I still think we have a lot to brush over, but I think it's one of the most important things we do all year, and I enjoyed that aspect.
Okay, thank you. We've all mentioned the budget review session and the amount of detail, but I just, in my comments on it, I just sense some new excitement, certainly with Mr. Went as our new city manager, some new and fresh ideas, new ways of looking at things, and so I think, I think we're really progressing in the right direction as a city, and there's a lot of problems to be solved and a lot of exciting things to be implemented, so it should be an exciting next couple of years, so thank you. Anything else?
Um, I. Let's hope it's more years than just a couple, you know.
I do have something. The bat phone went off and said with Resolution R-21-R-67, we may have the wrong amount, that this may be an older one. Rob, do you know, can you speak to that issue? Because the resolution says that the Webster Street resurfacing estimated local share is 179,282.80, and now I turn it to you.
Okay. Sorry about that. I just caught that as Mr. Went was reading this. I presented to you at the last study session the amount, and what got loaded onto the iPad for tonight was an old resolution. There was an error in the calculations for that, so what I presented to you last time was correct. What was in this, somehow, the old one, and me going back and forth with Missy got it incorrectly, and I did not catch that until tonight.
Which one?
It was for the resurfacing project, the grant application for MVRPC. So the number that Mr. Went read tonight, the city's share of 179,282.80, that is our share of the construction costs with the grant, but there will be an additional amount that we pay next year in engineering for the project that would bring the total to the 262 number, which was what was presented at the last study session.
262, 282, and 80 cents.
I apologize for that. I did not catch that.
So the resolution itself, which authorizes the funding and the program and things like that, basically, the only error is the estimated local share amount is off, but everything else is correct. So the resolution itself is fine, it's just the whereas clause that is incorrect. And I think we can, since we all acknowledge that, I think that all we really need to do is change that amount in the final resolution. But since this is a grant type of thing, I think I would prefer that we have a formal motion from council to adjust Resolution 21, amend Resolution 21-R-67 to put the correct local share amount.
So just for clarity, that, that is the amount, our share of the actual construction worth. What that does not include is the engineering work that was $83,000.
Okay.
Your Honor, I'll move to amend Resolution 21-R-67, specifically the whereas the Webster Street resurfacing estimated local share, and change that to 262,282.80.
Do you have a second?
Second.
And we have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilman Falek. All in favor?
Nope. Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst? Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes. So the amendment is approved, six to zero.
I apologize for. I apologize for the late catch, but I'm glad I caught it.
I'm glad you caught it, too.
Yeah, we need to approve the amendment.
We have to approve the-
Anything else?
The amended resolution? Do we have to approve the amended resolution?
No, I approve.
Oh. Okay, gotcha.
Are we done with all this technical stuff there, Jerry? Are we done with all this technical stuff?